That you're here by me?
Oh, yeah. Stand-up comic, I think.
Oh, I saw a lot of people heading that direction. Yeah, I didn't. First, I thought they were, because they were coming from the parking ramp there. At first, I thought they were coming here. And I thought, wow, that's a good turnout. Mary Jo, thank you so much. Yes, I'm a teacher.
Hi, how are you? Could you, could you hold one up to tell me what to say?
Yeah, cue cards.
Do you do that?
That's a good idea.
I'm glad to meet you. Yes, yes, thank you.
I think these guys probably know, but we start off with two minutes. So how will you be letting us know in two minutes? Is it 30 seconds?
I'm glad to see you again.
30 seconds left. Hi, nice to see you.
I'm Dan Stevenson. Jean, thank you. Nice to meet you. Oh, perfect, perfect. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Goodness.
I brought masks for everyone, but I don't need them.
Good evening. Welcome candidates, those here in the audience and those watching on the live stream. The League of Women Voters of Johnson County is pleased to be co-sponsoring this forum with the District-Wide Parent Organization, or DPO. Co-president Allison Strickland, we thank you for representing the DPO and working with us. And thanks to the entire DPO Executive Board for assisting in preparation for this evening. Please stand if you're a member of the DPO and here with us tonight. Thank you again. I'm Jean Donham. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. And this is why we have the policy that campaign literature is welcome outside of this room following the forum. No buttons, signs, or literature can be worn or distributed within this room. We ask that no questions or outbursts come directly from the audience. The League supports the free and open exchange of ideas through civil discourse. Please hold any applause until the end of the forum. And as a courtesy to all those present, please silence your cell phones. The League does take positions after considerable study on selected issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years and older, and we encourage you to join us. We can use your time, your talent, and your financial resources. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. League brochures are available at our welcome table near the entrance, or find us at www.lwvjc.org. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All candidates have been invited to participate. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, each will have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them. Our first two questions come from the District Parent Organization and the League, followed by ones submitted on cards by members of our audience. League members are distributing cards and pencils for you to write on. You may submit as many written questions for the candidates as you wish. Hold up your card, and a League member will collect it throughout the forum and bring it to me to read. Questions that fall into the same general category may be consolidated. And if time does not allow for us to have all questions addressed, you may contact candidates directly after the forum or at another time. Each question will be asked of all candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question, and there will be no time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for 90 minutes, and near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. Speaking order will be rotated throughout the forum. A League member, Mary Jo Langhorn, is our timekeeper using cards to alert the candidate when time is about up and when it is up. The election is scheduled for November 4th. Early voting for the November 4th city and school elections began today and is available eight to five weekdays at the auditor's office. You can check the auditor's website for satellite voting schedules. There are five candidates running for three seats on the Iowa City Community School District School Board, and our candidates are Jane Finch, who is with us online because she is ill; Jennifer Horn Frazier, who is here with us; Ruthina Malone is unable to attend, she is very ill. However, she will respond to all of the questions that are asked here tonight on her Facebook page, which is Ruthina Malone ICCSD Board of Directors. In addition to that, if you have specific questions for her, you may email her at ruthinaforboard@gmail.com. In addition here in attendance, we have David Norper and Dan Stevenson. I urge you to be careful and make sure that you make use, good use of the microphones before you, and let's start with opening questions, opening statements, sorry, from the candidates. Ms. Finch, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Jean. And good evening to everyone. First, I want to apologize for not being there in person tonight. I'm getting over an illness, finally, a fibral, and I did not want to expose anyone. I appreciate the accommodations being made for me in order for me to attend. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the DPO for hosting this forum tonight. This democracy in action reminds us all of the importance of public education to the fabric of our society, also thanks to those attending in the audience or at home via live stream, as well as those watching at a later date. My name is Jane Finch, and I'm excited to be here with you tonight to talk about public education and what it means to our community. I've lived in the Iowa City area for over 30 years. My husband Rami and I have lived in Coralville for two decades. We have two sons who both graduated from West High and are now students at the University of Iowa. I've worked as a physician assistant since 1995, primarily in the areas of oncology and otolaryngology, and currently practice at the VA Medical Center, where I also serve in the role as Chief Healthcare Ethics Consultant. My career has taught me to think critically, ask tough questions, and lead with compassion, skills I bring to my role on the school board. For the past eight years, I've been deeply engaged in supporting public education in our community. I previously chaired the district's Equity Advisory Committee and have served on the ICCSD Board of Directors for the past four years. I'm also a trained restorative justice facilitator, and I have mentored a Liberty High School student through Big Brothers Big Sisters. These experiences have deepened my understanding of the importance of social-emotional well-being and inclusive school environments. I'm running for reelection to provide stable leadership at a time when our district is at a pivotal moment. The growth of school vouchers and chronic underfunding threaten the future of public education. No more than ever, we need experienced leadership with a track record of getting things done. This community values public education like no other. Our schools are the pride of our community, and it would be an honor for me to continue serving this community in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Horn Frazier.
Thank you to the organizers for this opportunity and for everybody watching. I'm Jennifer Horn Frazier. I'm really glad to be here. I moved here in 1987 to attend the UI and then chose to make this my home because I love this community. I know all of us here agree that high-quality public education for everyone is essential for a healthy community and also to healthy democracy. But after decades of the long game to dismantle public education and worse, to undermine public confidence in our education system, we are facing a crisis in America and in Iowa. And while I'm angry and deeply concerned about these attacks and about their potentially harmful impact, I also believe that we can use these challenges as opportunities for growth and for innovation, and I'm excited about the prospect of being on the front lines in the fight to preserve and grow our, our district. Two things I bring to this fight are the breadth and depth of my experience and expertise across the education ecosystem and the ability and the courage to foster conversations to solve complex challenges. I have a degree in education, have been a language arts teacher in three public school districts, including this one. I've worked in educational publishing and test development, been an education nonprofit leader, and have been a strategy consultant for educational institutions. I also teach and practice strategic doing, a tool to help diverse groups of people bring their collective knowledge and perspectives together to create solutions to difficult problems. In other words, I've worked in nooks and crannies across the educational ecosystem, and now I focus on designing conversations to help groups innovate to solve problems, and I'd love to do that in the service of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norper.
Good evening. I'm just going to say thank you. I'm going to start with why I'm here. I'm very much a, I see something wrong, I want to fix it. And when we joined the district, I immediately started seeing some things that I felt needed to be fixed. I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I was, well, I've been here 18 years. My wife's a pediatric specialist at the hospital. I've got two children in the ICCSD. I started my educational career back in 1980. I was a peer tutor in grade school because I saw a lot of other children struggling, and I was always helping them out, and the teacher finally said, okay, I'm going to make use of you. Since that time, the past 45 years, I've worked with incredibly diverse groups of students, primarily addressing achievement gaps in math, in English, and in science. I have worked with refugee students, inner-city students. Was on the Navajo Reservation for a year. I've worked with special ed. Talk to me later if you want the whole list. My degree's in molecular and cellular biology. I've taught science in fifth through undergraduate. I coach. I coach baseball, soccer, football. I took a group in the Navajo Kids and had them complete the LA Marathon. So, that's what I do, ground up. We've got some issues. We've got major issues with achievement gaps. People talked about this eight years ago. I don't see a lot of change. I see a lot of stagnation. We've got issues with behavioral interventions. The two are actually pretty closely linked. These are areas I have a lot of experience in. I think that our board members need to have experience in making these decisions, and I think I can bring that to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the DPO, and thanks to all of you here in public and listening live or watching afterwards. I am a career teacher. I decided in seventh grade that I wanted to become a teacher, and while at times I've kicked myself for sticking with what I decided, when I was 12, I'm really glad that I've done it. So I've taught in West Liberty for the last 18 years. This is my 19th year in that district. Previously, I taught in Arlington Public Schools in Northern Virginia, and I spent two years teaching English as a second language in Japan. During my years in West Liberty, I've become engaged with our union, serving for seven years as our union president, and I've served for the last 11 years as our lead negotiator. Through that work, I've had great experience working with the West Liberty Community School District, the administration, and the school board. It's because of this I know the real role that the school plays in supporting our students and supporting our teachers. This is the experience that I hope to bring in service of our students and our teachers here in the Iowa City Community School District. I have two kids who are ICCSD students. My son is in seventh grade at Southeast, and my daughter is a freshman at City High. I've been grateful for the opportunities that they've had, grateful for the teachers that they have, and I'm looking forward to using my experience to support them and all students in the district.
Thank you. We just received input from someone watching online, and they're asking you to be sure to speak up as you speak into the microphones going forward. So, a little closer, really cozy up to your mic, I guess is the word. Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson. We'll now proceed to our questions. We'll rotate speaking order among the candidates. Members of the audience, I remind, are invited to put questions on note cards provided by League and DPO members, and I will ask those questions of the candidates. We will start with questions from the DPO and League. Recall that you have one minute to respond to each question. We'll begin this round with you, Ms. Horn Frazier, so you know you're up first. This is a question from the League. Legislation was passed in the last legislative session, allowing students to attend religious instruction courses during the school day, up to five hours per week, without being considered absent. Lifewise Academy offers a release-time religious instruction program for public school students in our district, and students from several schools are eligible to participate in the current school year. Do you anticipate any unintended consequences resulting from this program? For example, how might potential impact on academic progress of individual students who miss classroom activities be monitored? Or how might impact on the unity of the class be measured when students are leaving the classroom during class time? Or do you envision any extra burden on teachers, for example, to provide makeup work? Or do you see other possible impacts and ways to assess them? So we'll begin with you, Ms. Horn Frazier.
Thank you. I did see that legislation. I, I think that the, the four different potential impacts that are listed with that question are really thoughtful. As a former classroom teacher, one of the things that my head, my brain was going directly to was, wow, how would I manage that? Keeping track of students who are regularly in and out, how would I plan my activities around it? So yes, I do think there's a potential burden on classroom teachers, in particular, to manage, manage that. I think that the, the question about class unity is, is also an, a good point to make. But I do think that we have systems in place that track attendance, that track assignments, and as long as this is a legal requirement, there will be ways to manage it. But yes, I do think that it will be tricky.
Thank you. And Mr. Norper.
My first thought is, I like seeing students have the opportunity to participate in as many different activities, be they religious or other. I know that when I had an issue with the district, one of the suggestions that was given to me was to homeschool my child for a couple of periods, which in that case I did for a year. My child had to be taken out and brought back in. We worked with the schedule. I would imagine that any student that's going to be leaving can work within their schedule to minimize the impact. As far as the impact on other students, they're going to be bringing their experiences back. And, you know, again, whether it's religious or other, that's an experience, that's educational, it's going to broaden everybody's understanding of the world and the community. I see this as a positive thing, and I would support it, religious or other.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevenson.
I will definitely agree. I think it's important to offer children opportunities to further their education, further their involvement in all communities. As a teacher, I do know it is an added burden. I have students who miss for a variety of reasons, but if nothing else, something coming out of our COVID years is we have really adaptive ways to provide material to students when they miss. It's much easier now to refer them to what we've done. So overall, I, I support the idea of having students involved in activities, events that are meaningful to themselves and their parents, and believe schools can support them in doing those activities.
Thank you. And Ms. Finch.
Okay, so, thank you for that question. Yes, we, we are having Lifewise come to, there's a couple of schools. I think we have five students that, that are taking part in this program. And it, that is a concern, the potential that could be disrupting the school day, that it could be taking some time away from personnel, waiting with them while the van comes, and then waiting when the van drops them off. So it could have an impact on teachers, it could have an impact on, on progress. I think that's something that we definitely need to monitor. It is also a, a part of us being culturally sensitive, though, and we provide that cultural sensitivity to, to many different groups in, in our district. So I agree, it's something that we definitely need to monitor. Right now, I believe there's only five students that are taking part in this program, so right now it's a minimal impact. We'll keep our eyes on it.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the DPO. We'll begin with you, Mr. Norper. What role should the school board play in supporting teachers and staff so they can focus on student success? And what specific steps would you take to strengthen school safety and both teacher and student well-being?
Excellent question. The board needs to support our teachers at the, at the base level. I think our administration needs to do more also. As far as safety, behavioral issues, we need to start enacting policies that really address the issues. This is an area that I've been involved with for 45 years. I've worked with children, one-to-one. That's been the way that I've addressed the problem. And I know what it takes. I know the resources that it takes. This is a big issue to, to, to overcome. We need to do it as a group, but we need to involve the teachers. I've been talking to a number of teachers lately, and one of the questions they've asked me is, why doesn't the board talk to us more? And I'm going to have to say, as a board member, that's something I'm going to support.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you. I, I am glad that this issue has been discussed recently. I think that it is a real issue facing teachers across the nation and right here in Iowa City. As far as the board supporting teachers and being able to teach, I see a big part of that is from the district's comprehensive behavior approach, that as a district, we are focusing on the resources, on giving students the supports that they need to be ready to learn in the, in the classroom, so that we are providing students the nutritional support, the transportation support, the mental health support, and the counseling support. Obviously, teachers still will deal with individual issues in their classroom, and when issues do arise, I think the need for administration response, quick immediate administration response is incredibly important, as is follow-up communication, both with the teacher and the, the building administration. But then I agree that the school board, and I've heard this from the board in their meetings recently, the, the board really does want to know how policies are affecting teachers, and, and continuing those conversations will be critical.
Thank you. Ms. Finch.
Thank you for that question. That really is the top issue right now, as everyone know, it's been in the, everyone knows it's been in the news. First, I, I, when I look at a problem, I start with the data. And this is an area that there isn't a lot of transparency. The board is not getting reporting on violence against teachers or injuries against teachers. So that is something that we need to start getting information on. And in order for that to be accurate, we need to make sure that our teachers are aware of all of the channels for reporting. Those teachers need to know that there will not be any retaliation against them for reporting. And in order to get them to respond, they, they need to know that the administrators are going to be responsive to that. And if they aren't reporting, then we need to go to them and, and get the information from them. Now, in, some of the things that we're going to be looking at as board is our continuity of care, specifically looking at those IEP meetings and making sure that all voices are at the table and represented. We need resources for our teachers. We need paraeducators. We need training for them. We need to make sure that we're following the discipline protocols, and also remembering that behaviors are communication. Our, our students are trying to tell us something with those behaviors, and so that's my restorative practices are so, are so important.
Thank you. And Ms. Horn Frazier.
Thanks. So I, I think that my colleagues here have talked about the importance of communication, and so I will focus on a few other points in my response. I have had the opportunity to speak over the last few months with principals and teachers and paraeducators, and, and what I'm hearing in those conversations is that there is progress being made in terms of facility-level safety measures. But what may be the most productive place to look now is there, we, we do have established a continuum of services that are available to help with students with particular needs. And it sounds to me, from the conversations I've been able to have, that we have really good work being done sort of at the ends of that continuum, and we are not maybe using some of the options that are sort of in the center or in the middle portion of that continuum. And I'm, I'm hearing people with a desire to, to explore some other options that are not being currently used in terms of how to offer services to students, how to offer supports to, to students who may need them. And so I would like to see the board really dig into those options on the continuum of services to see how we could improve for everybody, students and teachers.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll begin with you, Mr. Norper. Is that right?
I was last, but, I was the first last, but.
Oh, sorry.
I'll do it again if you'd like.
No, that's okay. We'll move on. We'll start with you, Mr. Stevenson. So, this is a question from our audience. When are guidance counselors going to be able to spend their time doing guidance instead of doing schedules?
I will start by saying the term is school counselors. That, I know that that has been a change, certainly since when I was in school. School counselors are asked to do a lot, and, and the need there is great. I don't know the specific makeup of every counselor's day, but I do believe it's critical that we provide our counselors with the time that they need to work with students, to develop those schedules, to work with students. I work with our eighth-grade career class in setting up high school four-year plans. So tho- those are incredibly important pieces of school counseling, but the social-emotional work with individual students is critical as well. So my hope is that we are able to both So my hope is that we are able to both hire enough staff, counselors and other staff to help students do the planning side, as well as working with them individually on the social-emotional side.
Thank you. Ms. Finch?
That's an excellent question. I've been hearing that for years. I wondered it myself when my sons went through West High School. This seems to be an issue in the secondary level, that our school counselors are really more about helping students with their scheduling, making sure that they have the classes, to get them ready for beyond high school, whatever that may be. We have other mental health providers that do provide those services, and social workers. In order for our school counselors to be doing beyond what they're currently doing, we would need resources, we would need more counselors, we would, our counselors would need more time.
Thank you. Ms. Warren Frazier?
Thanks. So, we have two daughters, and they went through the art district from K through graduation, and we experienced some of this firsthand. But I will say that with, in particular, one of our daughters, there, her high school counselor ended up being a tremendous valuable resource to her. And so I just want to point out first that, yes, this is a problem, but also that our counselors are able to provide some of those supports right now to students. I do also know that in the state of Iowa, the ratio of school counselors to students is insane. It's just, it's way too high. And so I do think that one thing that we can do as a school board and as a district is to continue to advocate for funding to be able to support those kinds of resources in our school, so that we can provide more of those guidance and social-emotional support services than we currently are able to.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Norper.
This is, it shows a bigger issue, which is simply that we don't have enough money right now to provide the services that students need. And we only have two options. We either need more money, or we need to create an alternative system. In the past, I've been very involved with volunteer systems. That's kind of a separate issue here. Obviously, the counselors have specific things that they're doing. But, you know, it's that tough question that the board really, really needs to address, is what are our priorities? What do students really need? What are we going to prioritize spending our money on? And then, where can we potentially find alternative resources? It's just the problem of education today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will begin with you, Ms. Finch. Eight years ago, the achievement gap, particularly between those students on free and reduced lunch and those students who are not on free and reduced lunch, was a central concern during school board election, and many ideas were shared about how to reduce it. For new candidates, candidates who would be newcomers to the board, could you provide specific ideas on how you would work to close this gap? And for current board members, would you describe what ideas you've put forward and which have been implemented, and what impact, or measurable impact that is, that change has had? So we'll begin with you, Ms. Finch, on the achievement gap.
Sure, thank you. I got a lot of buttons I got to press here, because I got to put on my timer. So, I, I mean, I was, I served on the Equity Committee for four years, and this was a topic of discussion for the entire time. It is an issue that eludes us, it's definitely something that we need to continue to work on. I would, what I, what I want to say is that the single most important program that I think we have going on to try to shorten or decrease that achievement gap is our preschool program. The free preschool program that we have for fourth graders, that is getting all of our fourth graders ready, kindergarten ready, and also improving their third-grade reading level by the end of third grade, to be at grade level, which is when the, kind of what they say, the rubber hits the road, when we transition from learning to read to reading to learn. And I really think it's that preschool program that's going to make a difference.
Thank you. And Ms. Warren Frazier?
Thanks. I agree with Jane that the preschool program is incredibly valuable in helping to close those, the achievement gaps. However, when you're looking at what that can't do for us, I think then you need to really look at the data on a school-by-school basis, make sure that the schools are empowered to make plans and implement plans for working with the specific needs of their unique populations in their schools. We just saw a report at the board meeting last night about the progress that is being made, and I think it's very encouraging, and I would love to see more sharing from school to school of things that have worked, things that have been tried, things that have worked, things that have not worked, and just create our own set of best practices to continue to close those gaps.
Thank you. Mr. Norper?
This is something I'm very familiar with. The bottom line is, when you have a child with an achievement gap, they need intensive one-on-one instruction. And that is resource-heavy, and something that we just simply don't have the resources for. Something I keep thinking about is, we live in this incredible community, and when I talk to people, people want to be part of the solution, and I keep wondering why we don't have a more intensive volunteer program where people can come into the classroom or come into the schools, work one-on-one. I know that we had story reading, I know that we've had some programs, but we need something bigger, we need something better, we need something that really, truly addresses the problem. Because for years now, people have raised this issue. I know eight years ago, people were winning on this issue, and it's stagnated. These children are not getting their needs met. Preschool program, awesome, no doubt. There's a lot of people who aren't even touched by that program.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. I think this is really a fundamental issue, is how do we reach all of our students? How do we ensure that every student that comes to the Iowa City Community School Districts has a real opportunity for success? I support many of the moves that the board has made over the years in terms of allocating resources to schools based on need, based on students' needs, based on the poverty within a, within a building, based on ESL needs within a building, and as much as we can, focus resources on places that need it the most. Because those students that need it the most are the ones that we need to ensure that we reach. That's our responsibility in education, period.
Thank you. Next question comes from our audience. Will you support a district policy to not cooperate with ICE or other federal agencies in immigration raids in our schools? And we'll begin with Ms. Warren Frazier.
Thank you. When I started campaigning for school board this summer, the conversations I had with people were about a lot of different topics, and not this one. However, over the last couple of months, that has changed, and this is often one of the first questions or topics that people raise with me. It's a big concern. And so what I'm seeking is to make sure that people feel confident that our schools, that are each building, that each administration, that all of the staff in a building are very clear on what should and can be done in the event that there is some attempt by ICE to enter a school, and whatever that procedure is, whether we can share it or not widely, that the community within each school feels confident that the staff will sort of act in coordination and keep the students safe. That's a tricky situation, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Mr. Norper?
It is a tricky situation. These people are not playing games, and we have to be cognizant of what children are observing. We have to be respectful of all parties involved. I know that our administration has already addressed this issue. From what I've heard, it sounds like they've been very thorough in their directions. They simply want to make sure that buildings and children are safe, they want to make sure that they're following all the guidelines. It's what we can do. We cannot obstruct this process, it will not be helpful for anyone involved. For anyone in here who's ever dealt with law enforcement, you know that they take their job very seriously, and we need to be respectful of that. So, the bottom line is, you know, I think we're doing it right. We need good communication, we need good awareness, we need to make sure we're following the rules, and we need to make sure that, you know, none of the children get hurt, either physically or emotionally.
Thank you. Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, thank you. This is an issue that has concerned me for many years. I've been instrumental in the West Liberty District in compiling materials related to students' and families' rights related to immigration. I support the district's plan to protect students' legal and constitutional rights in face of any enforcement actions. The district does not, cannot, should not share any information about students' or families' status. If an action does happen at school, I appreciate that they plan to direct that through legal representation. I also think it is critical that we make plans, both within the school district, within our individual schools, and with our community, to support students whose families are ripped away, or whose parents or other family members are ripped away from them.
Thank you. Ms. Finch?
Yeah, this is an important question. I never thought that we would have to deal with this, but unfortunately, the times necessitate this. We're not going to put our employees at risk. We have policy, we, I'm sorry, we have protocols in place, and our administrators are educating our employees on what should occur. If ICE should show up to the school, we know it's happened in other communities, it's possible it could happen here, I really hope that it doesn't. Other things that we have done is make sure that our families are updating their emergency contact. There's community partners that are having know-your-rights conferences, so that our families are educated on that. The other thing that we need to deal with is the aftermath that happens after a violation of our safe space. We need to provide trauma-informed support, we need to communicate transparently with our families, make sure that we're sharing out resources, and ensuring that there is safety and calm in the school, and that all of our staff and students are safe and accounted for afterwards.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll begin with you, Mr. Norper. This is from our audience. Given the district's public commitment to equity and inclusion, how will you reconcile that mission with uninvestigated civil rights violations against both students and staff?
Wow. That's a hard one for a minute. You know, I think, I think, I'm going to give a very general answer. The bottom line here is, this is about fairness, and it's about making sure that we treat everybody the same. Oh, now I've got 30 seconds. You know, I think, I think that's what has to drive us ultimately, so I don't, I don't have any good specific insight without having some good specific details. But I think the bottom line is, is that we do need to make sure that we respect everyone, and, you know, that we stand by what's important to us.
Mr. Stevenson?
So, the biggest concern with changes to the Department of Education are the shutting down of the portions of that department that investigates civil rights investigations, as well as special education requirements. Change in the federal government's ability to do that, which was already limited and inadequate, doesn't change our responsibility to our students and to our staff. That we need to ensure that we are treating people equally, fairly, in their situations, and that they have processes to address concerns when they arise. There is, of course, an official district equity process for reporting issues. Also, I am encouraged by what I've seen from the district's Ombuds person, that they are able to be another route for, largely, the work has been with staff who have encouraged, who have encountered issues that have been of concern.
Thank you. Ms. Finch?
Jane, can you repeat that question?
I surely can.
I think I missed it.
Be happy to. Given the district's public commitment to equity and inclusion, how would you reconcile that mission with uninvestigated civil rights violations against both students and staff?
So, this, I think what this question is, is about accountability to our policies. And for the board, our accountability flows through the superintendent. We don't hold anyone else accountable for the super, other than the superintendent in his evaluation periods. We would need to ask for transparency for the data, so that we could take a look at these issues. We, and we would need to know that these issues existed. So, this is an area where we need engagement with the community, with our teachers. Recently, our Policy and Governance Committee wanted to pass a policy whereby we would not be able to discuss these types of issues with our teachers. I was opposed. They pulled back on that language, and so that those measures won't be passed. But that's how I would answer that question.
Thank you. And Ms. Warren Frazier?
Thanks. Yes, I think that question does sound like there are some examples of behavior or treatment that are not fair, and it sounds like what is potentially needed there is more communication, and then response and accountability. And so using the services of the Ombuds Office will be really important. I think that helping people in the district, our families, know that that resource is available to them, and making use of it to sort through situations, and then understand what the best course of action is. I do think, too, that with the firing this week of critical staff at the U.S. Department of Education who are focused on civil rights, we will have to think about how to fill that gap of expertise and accountability here in the district without those resources available.
Thank you. The next line of questioning, we will begin with you, Mr. Stevenson. When district administrators violate law or policy, should the board protect them, or should the board be responsible to the public interest?
So administrator accountability is key, right? I think from the board perspective, it gets difficult when you do look at a single, specific case. The board's focus needs to be on overall policy. When it comes to administrator accountability, what I look for, what I hope to see is evidence of administrator response to family and educator concerns, right? To know that our administrators are responding when issues arise, and in order to have that happen, the board has to know when issues have arisen. So, again, very difficult to talk about specific cases, but in general, I think that is critical, that the board knows what's going on, and that administrators demonstrate their responsiveness.
Thank you. And Ms. Finch?
Okay, sorry about that. I got to turn my timer on. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, this is one of the functions of the board. We need to hold the administration accountable. We can't do that until we have the data, and that's why I have repeatedly demanded transparency from our administrators over incidents like this. from our administrators over incidents like this. And this, you know, this is about building trust. We cannot build trust with our community if we're not holding people accountable. And there's so many things that we cannot do as a school district if we don't have the trust of the community. As you know, it's very difficult to build trust, and it's very easy for that trust to be broken. So, yes, again, it comes down to accountability and trust.
Thank you.
I absolutely support accountability and transparency. I think that, like we've been talking about, the board's role is to be very clear about expectations of policy, expectations related to values, which are really an expression of how we behave, and a means for creating that community, the trust, and the ability to work together in the service of our students. And really, what we're here to do is to ensure that every student receives the education they need. And so, anything that is an obstacle to that is a thing that we should look to address. And so, no, I don't think we should be protecting anything. I think we should be looking at how we can provide the best quality education for each student.
Thank you. Mr. Norper?
Transparency, transparency, transparency. As I have talked to people in the community, teachers, retired teachers, support staff and retired support staff, I have heard a lot of complaints about people being heard, having issues not addressed. This is something that's incredibly concerning to me, and something that I wasn't aware of before I started this process. I think the board needs to be a lot more proactive concerning this issue, because if somebody has an issue with an upper-level administrator, who can they talk to? You would hope they could talk to that person's immediate supervisor. But if there's not that trust, if there's fear of retaliation, it doesn't happen. And I've heard many people voice that they do have concerns, and that's something our board needs to address.
Thank you. Ms. Finch, you will be up first on the next question. We'll shift gears considerably here. I'm going to put two questions together that come from our audience. One, will you advocate for the use of compostable cutlery in schools, even though it costs more than plastic? And will you advocate for the district to participate in plastic-free lunch day in November?
I love that question. We had a student group, we had a student group from Lincoln Elementary come. It was a couple of years ago, asking us to do just that. And I was on board then. I'm on board now, of course. I would need to look at what the cost and the, you know, and how all of this would work out if this is something that we can do as a district. But I think it's in line with our values, and I love that these ideas came from our students, our elementary students. So, yes, I would love to look into that.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I love the idea of a plastic-free lunch day. I think it's a great challenge for, a fun way to help raise awareness for a really critically important issue of sustainability. I think whatever we can do as a district to help instill in our students a sense of duty to care for the earth as well as one another is a really positive thing to do. And couching it as sort of a challenge like this is a wonderful way to do it. In terms of the use of compostable materials in the lunchroom, I think that is a very worthy goal. I do think we have a lot to balance in that equation. And so, I would love to see us move in the direction of what are, you don't have to go all the way all at once. What's the first thing we can do? And then what's the next step we can do until eventually we get there? And I'd like to see us push for that.
Thank you. Mr. Norper?
Absolutely. We're here to educate our children. And part of that education is being good citizens in this world. I mentioned my wife's a pediatric specialist. I've been reading a lot of papers she's been bringing home lately about microplastics, the effects of plastics on the human body. I just returned from a trip where I got to see the effects of plastics on our ocean. This is absolutely an issue that our children should be aware of, and we should give them the independence to try to solve it by giving them some resources in the lunchroom. So, absolutely, I support this, and I'd probably even take it a step further and say, let's make plastics an issue in our science courses. Let's let these kids solve this problem that we're handing to them.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, absolutely. I think moving towards more sustainable, more earth, planet-friendly opportunities is incredibly important. But more than that, I think what everyone else has said, empowering our kids and letting them know that we hear what they're saying is critical. As a social studies teacher, as a middle school teacher, when I see my kids engaged in something in the community, in the school, where they have that passion, 100%, I want to support them in it. I support, in general, innovation within our schools, being receptive to issues like this and many others. So, I do want to see our kids empowered.
Thank you. Ms. Horton-Frazier, we'll begin with you in the next question. "The Iowa City Community School District's academic ranking has plummeted from the 41st percentile in 2021 to the bottom 23rd percentile of Iowa districts." And so, we currently rank 241st out of 313 school districts in Iowa. What oversight failures might have led to this collapse? And what accountability measures might you implement to reverse it?
Thank you. That's a big one. I have to say that I'm surprised by those specific numbers. What I heard last night at the board meeting was much more encouraging than that. But that aside, we do have issues that we need to address. And I think that the team, the administrative team, is doing a good job of digging into the available data, asking questions about what data are needed further to be able to understand more specifically where problems are cropping up. We have been making some changes in curriculum, new math curriculum, and I think we're seeing some impact from that, and should in the coming years. But continuing to give the school, each school, the ability to tackle their specific student populations. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Mr. Norper?
I wish I had 10 minutes to talk about this. We need to be solving these issues from the ground up. Again, I'm not sure about those specific numbers. I do know, I read recently that we're 12th in the state. Our state is currently in the bottom 50th percentile. There is no reason Iowa City should not be number one. We have the most amazing teachers and support staff. I've been going to schools. I've been talking to people. It is not an issue of the resources that we have regarding our teachers. It's an issue of achievement gap. And we've got to get in there, and we've got to provide those one-on-one services to get that achievement gap to increase. And our administration really needs to work from the ground up and not be trying to solve all these problems from the top down, kind of throwing darts and hoping they're going to hit the target.
Thank you. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you. As a teacher, as a parent, as someone long familiar with standardized testing and the outsized role that that plays in a lot of rankings, I'm always leery to see these numbers. But at the same time, I think it is an important measure that we need to keep in mind. I am most interested in knowing what's going on in my students' schools. Are they being engaged? Are they being challenged? Are they given those opportunities to succeed? I'm hopeful, as the district moves through the high-reliability schools model, that as they focus on district-wide instruction, that teachers are given the real opportunity to work with other teachers to share those methods that have been successful, where they have had success in growing score numbers and in reaching students.
Thank you. Ms. Finch?
This is a great question. And so, to sort of respond to Jennifer's reaction to the board meeting last night, which I was not at because I was ill. But, you know, our administration does have a tendency to cherry-pick those numbers. So, again, all of this starts with transparency. We need to get the data. Data needs to be disaggregated. We need to understand the root causes. Certainly, our class sizes play a role in this. That's something that we definitely need to work on. And we need personalized learning plans for these students with targeted interventions. We cannot, again, we cannot fix a problem if we cannot admit that it is a problem. I realize we need resources, resources that may not be there. But this is something that we need to analyze. We need to come up with solutions, you know, impact those, you know, put those solutions into place, monitor, continuous monitoring, and then keep on with our process like that, and to see if we can make any impacts for these students.
Thank you. Our final question. "The board approved a five-year, 104.6 million facility plan in June 2025 that includes new field houses and fine arts upgrades. What concerns, if any, do you have with this plan in the face of unknown state funding and potential for declining enrollment?" And we begin with Mr. Norper.
I did take the last question first.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Stevenson?
That's what I thought. All right. So, this is a big project. I will share, my family and I had lived in West Branch, and we moved back to Iowa City at the point that Iowa City passed the bond in 2017. I saw that as an incredible investment in our schools, in our facilities. Going forward, I think as we compete for students and as we try to make our opportunities greatest for students in the district, I believe investments in our facilities that help us to be top-notch are critical. So, while I do agree with concerns about the amount of spending, overall, I do believe we need to continue to invest in our facilities. That is certainly one of the things that brought my family and I back here to Iowa City.
Thank you. Ms. Finch?
Yeah, thank you for that, Dan, because that is exactly why we're investing in these facilities. It is all about maintaining and growing enrollment in the face of vouchers. We need to be the best. We need to be the choice. And along with that comes with having the best facilities. Now, I am a little bit concerned about what the operational costs may be of some of these additional infrastructure initiatives. One thing that I think we need to do that we're not doing is to perhaps take it a little bit more slowly so that we don't bite off more than we can chew. I am all for the fine arts improvements. That is something that was, something that I brought to the board, and I was able to get included in our facilities' master plan. The one thing that I'm not in favor of is the Junior Achievement Dream Accelerator, which I don't believe has any data to support its use in our facilities, and is something that we will have to use general fund dollars to bus our students to.
Thank you. Ms. Horton-Frazier?
I believe deeply in the value of fine arts and athletics as a way to help our students have the best educational experience and have a well-rounded education. And so, I definitely am a supporter of investing in those facilities. I do think that the investment today looks a little riskier than it may have looked when it was first conceptualized because of changes in the funding environment and the political environment. And so, for that reason, what I hope we end up doing with that is engaging in more frequent review and evaluation of the projects as we go along to make sure that we're not kind of getting out and over our skis too much. But I see them as really important investments in our district in attracting as many students and families as we can and high-quality educators as we can. And I'm really excited to see these projects come to fruition.
Thank you. And Mr. Norper?
Can I take the next 30 minutes?
Sure.
So, this is a loaded, loaded issue. I'm not seeing any improvement in student performance associated with all these dollars that we're spending to spruce up these campuses. I've seen buildings that were great, that looked totally functional. They needed some updates. And all of a sudden, you know, we're getting fancy staircases. We're getting, you know, fancy paint jobs. We're spending a lot of money. And I'm seeing budgets. I know our local school, it was going to be $4 million. It ended at $12 million. I think the board, again, transparency, the board needs to see a breakdown of these dollars. They need to make sure that this money's actually being spent for a reason that's good. I think fancifying, it's not helpful. I think there are a lot of people in this community that make money off of this process. I strongly respect our local tradesmen and our contractors. But as a community, we really need to be smart fiscally. And again, more transparency. Let the board understand how those dollars are being spent.
Thank you. So, our final question for the evening, we'll begin with you, Ms. Finch. "What is one issue we have not discussed this evening that you think is important to the Iowa City Community School District?" Ms. Finch?
Yeah, this is the one that is looming large over our heads, and that is our financial situation. We have an unspent authorized balance of about 1% to 2%. The goal of that is, it should be between 5% and 10%. So, we've got a razor-thin margin. We do not have much of a cushion, and we're seeing enrollment declines this year. So, the board will most likely be faced with some type of budget reduction in the next year or two, depending on how we manage the next budget year. But this is something that is, you know, the result of vouchers, and it threatens the strength of our district, and something that should be talked about more.
Thank you. Ms. Horton-Frazier? An issue?
I agree. Funding is the number-one issue facing us. The voucher program is only making state finances worse, and that will have an impact here. And that doesn't even include what's happening at the federal level, which will also have an impact here. And so, I think what we are going to need to do is to continue our efforts, our conversations around transparency, to talk about the margins that Jane was just mentioning, and also see where we might do things differently than we have in the past. I think that we may need to start looking at more options along the lines of, well, where are some potential revenue generation opportunities? We are going to be having beautiful facilities. Can we use those in some other way to help? What are other ideas that come from our community? And I'd like to see us have more conversation about what the options are for both efficiencies and then also revenue generation to fill some of those gaps that we know are looming.
Thank you. Mr. Norper?
So, you just heard two great responses about finance. That's, our power to increase funding is limited, obviously. So, we do have to be smart about this, and we need community involvement. We need discussion. I see the two biggest issues facing us right now involve this achievement gap and specifically behavioral issues. I've talked to teacher after teacher who have talked about how a single student or two students within their class can ruin their year, and it just makes it incredibly difficult. These teachers love these kids. They want to make sure that their needs are met. Children can be incredibly difficult, and that can impact their classmates. It obviously impacts the teacher and the support staff. I think we really need to get in there and address these issues because we're losing good teachers. We're losing parents. I just heard a story of two professionals that left because they were concerned about the schools in Iowa City. So, this is a problem that is priority one. We need to make sure that those classrooms are safe, that our teachers feel excited about coming to work during the day, that students are, you know, feel safe and likewise excited. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you. I absolutely agree that funding is going to be our most critical issue going forward. We've faced, I've been a teacher in Iowa for 20 years now. And, and I'm afraid that we're going to look back at these last five years of 2% increases from the state as the good years. As we go forward, I think what we need to do as we face shortages is finding creative solutions and prioritizing staff and programs that directly support students. Our mission as public schools is critical. And it is to teach all students in our district to give them the best possible opportunity. So as we move forward, we need to ensure that we are prioritizing the staff, the teachers, the paras, the district employees that directly support kids and provide that for those kids and for all kids.
Thank you. Each candidate will now have two minutes to make a closing statement. We'll do this in reverse order from our opening statements, which means you get to begin, Mr. Stevenson.
All right, thank you. So I've really appreciated this chance for discussion tonight. As I've been engaged in the political process, I will say it's not all my favorite. But being able to sit down and talk to people about our schools, about possible solutions, that is fantastic. What I bring to this opportunity to sit on the board is firsthand experience working with the issues that face our teachers, that face our students, that face our schools. I've worked with teachers through my union work to support them as they had difficulty within our district. I've worked directly with community groups to create opportunity for our students, to create opportunity for their parents to find ways that students and the community can be brought into our schools. Going forward, all I care about is supporting the students and the teachers of our district. That's why I'm doing this, that's what I care about. I would love to hear from any of you, ideas, concerns, et cetera. I do have an email, danforboard@gmail.com. I won't get back to you tonight or maybe tomorrow, but I will hopefully get back to you soon. Oh, one more minute. Thank you. Oh, but then, oh, is that the one-minute beeper? So again, I, I will share that those are my, my dual concerns. I've seen Iowa City do so many things right by their teachers, from providing competitive wages. You know, I, I looked at this district and could make a lot more money here. I've seen Iowa City do right by their teachers by continuing in good faith to bargain all allowable contract language. So on the board, I hope to look for ways that we can continue to support teachers in what they do, that being a core understanding of mine.
Thank you. Mr. Norper.
So I got into this process because I had a very unsatisfactory experience with our upper-level administrators. I was appalled by the response that I got regarding some questions that I brought to them. Regarding these issues, I was told things like, well, maybe you want to put your children in parochial school. You'll need to homeschool if this is really an issue. And this was actually a pretty small issue. We were trying to get them to tell us why they were giving kindergarteners technology and if they actually had an intention and an assessment plan. My son had some issues and we asked for some paper resources. And they simply refused to supply them. And that's when they gave us some alternatives. Another one was, maybe you'd like to get a lawyer. I just walked away feeling in my gut like we can do better. And here I am, highly educated, very, very strong advocate. I have a lot of experience addressing big issues. What about all those parents who don't have that resource? Are they just going to get a door closed in their face? As I've talked to teachers, and I've gone to them and I've said, hey, let's talk about tech. And they've said, hey, let's talk about behavioral issues. And let's talk about administrative response. And let's talk about a feeling about, of, of, or fear of retaliation. And let's talk about a group of men who might not be able to work well with women. Let's talk about people that give a sense of, you know, protecting one another more than showing an interest in, you know, some, some very strong issues. This concerns me. And as a board, we have the ability to make policy and we have the ability to choose our superintendent. And I think that we need an incredibly active board to exercise, you know, those, those abilities to ensure that every teacher in this district wants to go to work. Fear of retaliation, that just hit me hard. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn Fraser.
Thanks again for, for the opportunity to have this community conversation. I'm hearing so much tonight about how people value the opportunity to, to talk, to be open, to be transparent. And one of the things that has really struck me in the conversations I've had the opportunity to have in the past few months is just the idea that school is really the one place in society where everything converges. Public schools are so much more, or a student in a public school is so much more than a class schedule and a set of grades. Technology. No worries. And, and, and so schools are tasked with addressing all of society in these little packages, or, or not-so-little packages. And with every student carrying their own universe of hopes and dreams and needs and challenges and, and talents. And, and so as a board, being involved in the community, having conversations, being accessible is critical. And I, and that's a thing I feel compelled to contribute and would love the opportunity to contribute in, in being courageous enough to have conversations that may be difficult, to be able to encourage people who may not feel like their voices have been heard and appreciated always, to speak up and contribute their perspectives. We are going to be facing some very complex, difficult challenges. And the only way you can solve a complex challenge is through deep conversation. And deep conversation from, with diverse people at the table so that you can create a good solution collectively. And if I have the opportunity to serve in this capacity, that will be one of my big focuses, is really how to engage one another in deep, meaningful conversations so that we can collectively address the things that concern us all for the good of our students, for the good of our amazing educators, and ultimately our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Lynch, Ms. Finch, I'm sorry.
It raised us up the first time that one's happened. So I want to thank the League and the DPO for hosting this forum. Also, thank you to the community for staying engaged. Lastly, thank you to my fellow candidates. Wow, we've got some great candidates this year. Your, your dedication to public education is inspiring and your time and commitment to this process is commendable. It says so much about our community that we have candidates of this caliber wanting to serve in this volunteer role in the school board. And I could not be more proud to be running alongside all of you. People ask me if I'm nervous about the outcome and I tell them, no, not in the least, because I know that whoever is elected is going to represent our community well, in a committed, in a committed and passionate way, with the best interests of our district at heart. Please know that this has been an honor for me to serve on this board for the past four years. I have worked hard to represent with integrity, compassion, and a commitment to ethics, transparency, accountability, always keeping the student at the center. The relationships I have made along the way responding to stakeholder concerns and working collaboratively on, on solutions to problems have been extremely rewarding to me. And it would be an honor to keep serving this community on behalf of our students, our educators, and our families. If reelected, I will work towards safe and supportive classrooms, strong academic and extracurricular programs, recruitment and retention of top educators, and transparent, community-centered decision-making. Public education is the foundation of a strong, just, and thriving community. My children thrived in this district. I want the same and even better for, for every student that we serve. With your support, I will continue to lead with experience, integrity, and heart. And regardless of who you support, please continue to stay engaged. It's so important. And please vote. It is a right that people marched for and fought for and is vital to our democratic society. And if you have any additional questions, please reach out to me, Jane Finch School Board, or you can find me on Facebook, or you can find me at the farmer's market this Saturday. I'll be there until 10:00. Please reach out and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Finch. We would like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum are those of the candidates and that sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. The election will be held on November 4th. Please vote at your polling place or beginning today at the auditor's office or at one of the satellite voting stations. Thank you to the candidates and to the Iowa City Cable TV staff. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, on the DPO website, and on the website of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County at l w v j c dot org. It will also be available on Iowa City Cable Channel 4, Coral Vision TV, and the North Liberty Local Channel. Check their websites for program schedules. Again, thank you all for being here tonight and thank you to the candidates.